With uh. But this song is a different one, and so. I um. Very pleased with this one. I think hopefully you will be. Hopefully I can do it justice today. So um. This one sort of hits sort of the kind of train of thought that I like to to deal with also. So it makes it. One of those things that I really was good. Last week we closed up on Joseph. And his mission from God. And Joseph had to go a long way for that mission. Uh, there's several right routes through life he could have taken, but his attitude and his brother's anger. Sort of. Picked the path for him because of that. And so he took the long route to get to. Where God's will needed him to be. But he learned through it, you know, just like we all learn. Sometimes we pick the wrong paths and. Have to learn through it. His brothers also had a long way to go to do their mission. But God works through those things. Regardless of us in many cases to fulfill his purpose. You know, because we've got to train, we got to prepare, we got to. And be ready to lead the people in God's will. These folks had a mission. As Israel, as the children of Israel to do something. That mission was to bless the world. Okay? Um, God also sent other people on similar missions. And um, he sent Moses, he sent the prophets, he sent Nehemiah, he sent Jesus. Finally, he sent each of us on a mission. You know, you've got to, you know, through this last week, you got to think about what was your mission? You know, uh, sometimes it takes a crisis to. Forces to see our mission. You know, when it's a crisis, we, all the small issues sort of fall away at that point. And we turn and look at what's really valuable. A lot of times that's in family crises, maybe church crises. Um. A lot of times we found that there's. That we haven't offered forgiveness when we should have a long time ago. Not offering forgiveness is a, is a major problem because. If we don't offer forgiveness. We're not forgiven. You know, we're not right with God. We can't have a healthy relationship with God, nor then can we have a healthy relationship with others. So. So experiencing God's grace. Enables us, and if we really experience God's grace, it enables us to be a channel of grace to others. So we got to look back and say, who do we need to forgive? Go back, don't wait for a crisis, take care of that now. So that was our lesson. Last week, and that sort of culminated several weeks because it was really. Almost a reoccurring theme through that whole series, which is sort of me, but we covered a ton of history. Through all of that, so we were having to keep up with a lot of stuff. Today's lesson. We're going to talk about Thanksgiving a little bit. Now, we talked, obviously, you know, everybody remembers the pilgrims because you did that when you're. Grade school and all that, made your turkey. You did that kind of stuff. We always thought it, well, it was bad, you know, but I want you to really understand the magnitude of how bad it was. Okay? A hundred and two passengers and thirty crew left England. Okay? On September sixth. Why September sixth seems like, you know, one of the dumbest mistakes to me in the world too.
It was after election.
Yeah, it was after. So. The uh. They uh, you know, so they arrived, I don't know how much later, I didn't look that up, but the issue is hundred and two arrived here. In New England. Through that first winter, forty-five people died. Okay? It's almost half. Now. Out of eighteen couples, now you got to remember. That's roughly fifty-seven people. Now. Okay? Out of eighteen couples, only three couples. Both. Haves of the couple survived. Okay, so there's only three couples left. Okay? The, the next. By the next winter, you know, they'd lost five. Okay, but that's when they had the first Thanksgiving. Okay? So. You know, they had about fifty-seven then, and by the next year, you're down to fifty-two, so roughly half. By then, okay? So you got to say, is it fifty-two people that is this colony? Okay? So they were um. Uh, they pretty much stabilized, you know, it, so that was twenty sixteen twenty, sixteen twenty-three is pretty much stabilized. Took three to four years to, to. Really get into a stable community. And I think it's Wampanoag, I think was the way they pronounced it. Wampanoag. Had befriended them. Um. You, you, you wonder if they regret that now, but the uh. The Wampanoags befriended them and helped them through that next year. Okay, and so they had that time of thanks. Together. Okay? It was crucial. You know, that relationship with them made it crucial. And that's the legacy of the pilgrims, and that sort of became our first Thanksgiving, but we sort of lost its meaning over time. You know, and quite frankly, our ability to deal with praise and thanks. When I started thinking about praise and thanks, we tend to use those in the same. Um. At the same time. Okay? But they're totally different. Okay? When you really think about it, praise and thanks are totally different. Praise is about, you know, if you look at purely by definition, praise is about acknowledging and celebrating someone's character. Or their qualities or their actions. Okay? You know? You're just focusing, you're not focusing on any personal benefits, you're just probably saying. You're a good person. You know, you have good character, you have good whatever, okay? Nothing in return. Thanks. Is expressing gratitude for something you've received, a specific action. You've received from something. Okay? So. You know? If somebody's done something for you, acknowledge that. Okay? What they've given you. You know, you express, you know, in religious contexts, you express gratitude for God for blessings. Guidance or provision. Okay, so difference. Praise is about someone and their inherent qualities. Thanks is for some, something someone has done for you. Okay? And it's going to mix them up today, so I wanted to get that. Clear upfront, so, because it's going to jump back and forth today, and I'm going to try to keep differentiating, but I want you to understand upfront. So when we need help, who do you go to today? Okay?
Ghostbusters.
Ghostbusters. But you know, I mean, you may say your kids. Some people, it might be your church. It was Nate, Shelly and I were talking to uh. Liz, I can't think of her last name. Um. And. You know. Gro, Grover, yeah. And she was just so happy to be in church and somebody got, broke her out of the uh home down here. To be there, and she really wants to be out, okay? But um. But yeah, you know, so she's got to get better. So, so the thing when you, when you start thinking about it, you got to say is, okay, when you're, you're, you're only wanting to be thankful. You look at what the pilgrims had to go through, you said. Is your testimony of being rescued by God, is it better than the pilgrims' testimony, so to speak? Technically, to you, it probably is. Because. You really can't. Understand the fullness of the pilgrims' plight. What they went through, you know? You know? Yours is always bigger than everybody else's, no matter what it is. In fact, you always have people that try to uh one-up each other. As you get older, you know. My, my illness is worse than yours. You know, and, and you, and you get into talking about all of your cuts and. Aches and pains and stuff like that. So it's personal to you, what?
And your steroids.
Your steroids, that's right. The uh, uh, it's. Something that impacts you has deeper meaning, so, you know, as you think back. God has rescued you from a bad situation. Our problem is. Is sometimes we remember those and sometimes we don't. Sometimes we just never even noticed. Until later. Hopefully. You know, sometimes it was something scary. Sometimes it was a state of sin. Or a state of falling back into sin, okay? God rescues us a lot. You know, I mean, technically, if you really look, you'd find out God is rescuing you all the time. He, he helps you avoid. That toxic person. Okay?
We, we tend to. Find. More what we call rational. Explanations for everything, and it's not until we actually start looking for God that we will seek him in one of those other situations.
Yeah. All right, let's go to our first scriptures. We've got a lot of scriptures today, so.
I will exalt you, Lord, because you have lifted me up and have not allowed my enemies to triumph over me. Lord, my God, I cried to you for help and you healed me. Lord, you brought me up, Michelle, you spared me from among those going down to the pit. Sing to the Lord, you his faithful ones, and praise his holy name, for his anger lasts only a moment, but his favor a lifetime. Weeping may fade over the world, but there is joy in the morning.
Okay. Who was your favorite underdog? You know, you have a story of your favorite underdog?
What's the name of it though?
Underdog is a person that. Wasn't supposed to win, David and Goliath, kind of a thing, okay? Underdog, somebody that wasn't supposed to win, you know? I, I'll, I'll give you a, a one to remind you. I don't know if y'all remember a guy named Daniel Rutiger. You remember Daniel Rutiger? You'll remember if I tell you. That he's the guy. That was in the movie Rudy. That one, that name Rudy. Y'all remember him? Okay? He was made famous by the film Rudy in nineteen ninety-three. He was known for his perseverance at Notre Dame. He was small. Didn't have a scholarship, obviously. Don't know if he had a whole lot of intellect other than his guts. Okay? But he managed to play in one game for Notre Dame. In nineteen seventy-five. And uh. I don't know about the. Truth of how they got him in or whatever, you know, they, where they. Scored a touchdown, so they didn't get him in. But uh. But you know, he did get in one and he made a sack in the final. Plays in the game, okay? He spoke, uh, I got to hear him speak once at uh our IG Christmas party, uh, I think it was ninety-three also. And very inspirational guy, but you know, that guy. Pretty much. Had to do. You know, everything. And was an inspiration to people because of it. There, there's those kind of underdogs that are out there that have to go through things. David was that for a while. But you know, David, now we're going to see today, David had his point where he. Got cocky. Okay? He. Was real humble. For the first part, and then all of a sudden he got cocky. So. She just started the thing. This song is titled Dedication. And so that makes it hard to understand what it was about, so I think we're going to tag it to something in a minute. To give you a little bit of an idea of a dedication means a consecration. You know, when you, when you commit something, you know, you basically are doing an event. And so it's probably, we purchased the threshing floor. Where, you know. Uh, uh, and, and I'm going to go into more details about that in a minute. Threshing floor where Abraham was going to sacrifice Isaac. You know, in the past and stuff like that. So I'll, I'll get to that in a minute because there's a lot of details there because. The scripture a little further down is going to emphasize some things there that. Why we think this is this historical thing, but he's, he's. Talking to God here, but in this verse, the first part, what does it tell you specifically? Very simply, what does he say in God is? Verse one.
What was the question?
What is, what is uh David saying that, that he, that he's doing for God? What is God doing for him?
He lifted him up.
He's lifting him up, okay? So God is our deliverer. From, from that perspective, but lifting up, uh, uh, some of the versions will say, uh, the version I've got on the screen says, he's drawing me up. Okay? And that. That's the same word for pulling up a pail out of the water. Okay, lifting a pail out of oil. Okay? Uh. A word I like to use for it is. He lifts us up, you know. Basically. Lifts me up. When we see God, we're going to fall before God. Okay? We know that scripture is very clear that we're going to fall down before God, okay? But. The only way we're going to be lifted up is if God lifts us up. Okay? And this is the picture I want you to get here, okay? We're falling before God. God has to lift us up because we have to bow in his presence because. It's all that we can do. That. Our problem is, we don't do that. We, we tend to think of God as just, you know, he's sort of the. Uh, the person that just sort of, I can just sort of talk to and go along, and that's right, we can do that, but we don't think about God's here. And we're here. We don't look at him from a praise perspective in the prior thing, so. The issue is, is when he sits there and says is. Is I will extol you, oh Lord, for you have drawn me up, you have lifted me up. He is saying, you know, God has taken me from. That position and picked me up. Okay? It's a cool analogy from that. In Isaiah forty-one, it says, God strengthens, it opposes people in face. Face of opposition. Okay? Then the next thing he does, he says, I've cried to you for my help. You've healed me. Well, God hears and he answers prayers, and we know that, okay? That's, that's one of those things that we all know that. The prayer, you know, James says, the prayer of faith can bring healing and restoration. You, think back, when has God brought joy to you from weeping? Okay, because he says here, I cried to you for help. When is, when have you wept before God? A lot of us, you know, it hadn't been, well, maybe we need a week more before God. Maybe there's, you know, there's things in our life that we're not caring enough about to weep over them. People in our life. You know? Play people that we want God to touch, okay? So. God brings joy through your weeping. Trust in God's healing power. Try to do it ourselves, you know, we try to do it ourselves first. You know, we trust in God. Let's go through that. Then he says, then he brings it up, he says. This is the confusing part, he says, you brought me up from the soul of shield. Hey, what does shield represent?
Yeah.
Yeah. Right? Physical or. Spiritual, right? Okay? God has a power to rescue us from the brink of death, both physically and spiritually. Okay? Now. I started looking back, I said, when did this happen? Okay, when you look on it, David. Technically really didn't have any diseases or anything, but there's one particular point. When. There was a problem, and this happened in Second Samuel twenty-four, okay? David went out and ordered a census against God's will. Y'all remember that? Okay? And the act was seen as an act of pride and reliance on human strength by David. And because of that. After he completed the census, David realized his sin and pleaded for forgiveness. The prophet Gad came to David, and you remember what David, what he told David? Said, you have your choice of what? Three punishments. Okay? Three years of famine. Three months of fleeing from enemies. Or three days of plague. Y'all remember what David chose?
Plague.
Three days of plague. The plague struck Israel, killed seventy thousand men. Okay? As the angel of the Lord approached Jerusalem to destroy Jerusalem, God relented and commanded the angel to stop. David saw the angel standing by the threshing, threshing flower, I'm sorry, I've got a little bit of control still. The threshing floor. Of Ar, Aruna, uh, the Jemus site. He pleaded for God's mercy there. And asked for the punishment to fall on him instead of the people of Israel. Okay? God instructed David to build an altar there. So David obeyed, he purchased the threshing floor. Built an altar, altar, and sacrifices. Now, you remember this, I told you a little earlier, this was the um. Um. Place where Abraham offered Isaac as a sacrifice. Up on the mount there, okay? So what did it become in the future?
Temple site.
The temple site, okay? So you can see that in the future, it moves to be the temple site or Solomon's Temple was built, which is basically. You know, where redemption came, and so you're seeing it as the redemption, you know. Emphasizing God's redemptive purpose through the whole thing. So pretty cool, huh? Okay, so the anger that he's doing here, he comes in and says, sing praises to the Lord, all ye saints, okay? So God's discipline is brief. But it's purposeful. Okay? God disciplines us. We need discipline. We need to be reminded of who he is and things. But his favor and his blessings endure forever. Pain is temporary. Where joy calls for it, okay? So he says, sing praises, all you saints, give thanks to his name. Um. So David's not satisfied with praising God alone, what is he doing?
He is leading his people to be able to follow God.
He's leading his people. He's basically teaching his people how to praise. God is here, we're here, we praise God. God's creator, God's redeemer, God is holy. Okay? And, and I have to, when I praise, I've got to sit there and I got to think of those kind of things. I got to say. You, you know, the Psalms are really good about that. You got to think about, okay. What do I praise God for? What I, I tend to want to thank God. Versus praise God, so I got to praise God. Then I got to thank God. Okay, so that's the difference. Okay, let's read the second. Well, I'll tell you what, one more thing, I was going to say. Second Corinthians four seventeen to eighteen, it says, temporary afflictions prepare us. For an eternal weight of glory. All right, let's go to the second set of scriptures.
When I was secure, I said, I will never be shaken. Lord, when you showered me, showed me your favor, you made me stand like a strong mountain. When you hid my face, I was terrified. Lord, I called to you. I sought favor from my Lord. What gain is there in my death? If I go down in the pit, will the dust praise you? Will proclaim your truth? Lord, listen and be gracious to me, Lord, be my helper.
Okay. Big transition here. He's talked a little bit about. Where they were. Now he's talking about what happened between him and God. Okay? David. It all happened because David got cocky. Okay? David got cocky, did it his way versus God's way. So this section now highlights the dangers of self-reliance in prosperity. Prosperity is a problem. Because prosperity. Forces us to get cocky. We start thinking, how good I am, how smart I am. Whatever. I'm glad I took this degree versus going to get that degree. You know what I mean? Those kinds of things, we get cocky. Here's David, he got cocky here. Okay, so. We've got to turn to God here. How does pride affect our relationship with God?
Separates us.
Separates us, okay? Puts a barrier between us and God.
It does it with anybody we have a relationship with.
Yeah.
That's what sometimes I think we miss so much of when we look at scripture is. There's nothing necessarily that different. About God other than who he is in terms of our desiring and seeking relationship with him. It's the same kind of work that we have to have with each other.
Okay? So. Pride. Basically puts a barrier between us and God, so basically it's sin. Because now there's something between us and God. Have you seen a time when pride got in the way of someone's walk? You know? And how they just sort of, even though they might have been good. They might have been still okay people. They just didn't have. That kind of a walk anymore. That they had before. You know? And, and, and sometimes we have to look back and say, yeah, they just sort of. Started missing it somewhere around here, you know, somewhere less smart, they. They just sort of. Got that. I call it that vanilla kind of a. Thing, you know what I mean? They're just, you know, not, not with it as much. And he said, I said him, you know, as for me, I said in my prosperity, okay? So he said. We're all tempted to believe self-sufficiency, forget the blessings, who they come from. That's easy, but you know, scripture after scripture after scripture says, say, Deuteronomy eight seventeen eighteen, it says. It is God who gives the ability to prosper. Okay? In Proverbs sixteen eighteen, everybody knows that pride goes before destruction. And a haughty spirit before a. Fall. Philippians two three says, do nothing out of selfish ambition. But in humility, consider everyone more important than. Yourselves, okay? So. Plenty of scripture tells you to do that. But sometimes we have to learn it the hard way. Back, sometimes we have to learn it over and over and over again, don't we? Uh. I, I think. A, a, and, and that's when they talk about the church. The church in. Areas that are preoccupied has more trouble being a church than churches in areas. Where the church is. Under persecution. Because they don't get distracted by. All of. The. Temptations of life. Okay? We get distracted and we want to say those things are good and I'm getting those because.
I deserve.
I deserve it. No, you're right. It's exactly right. Okay, now he says, he goes and he says. You hid your face, I was dismayed, okay? What happens when God withdraws his favor or presence from us?
Loneliness.
Okay?
Isolation.
Isolation, you feel empty, you feel. And, and it sort of serves as a wake-up call to us, don't we? It's like. Oh. What you got to pray is, you notice it sooner versus later, right? Right, we see that, and it reminds us of our dependence on him. In Hebrews twelve six, it says, the Lord disciplines those he loves to bring them back to him. Okay? In Numbers six twenty-five, twenty-six, it says, with repentance, God's face shines on his people. That's a pretty cool statement. When we repent, God's face shines on us. Okay? So if you feel distant from God. If you feel vanilla, let's just say, okay? You know, because sometimes you sit there and you just feel like the spirit's moving in me. But anytime you feel like you plateaued or you feel vanilla, you got to seek. To restore that relationship. You got to say, what's keeping me from that? Bubbling relationship I had with God? What am I missing? Now David here was dismayed, it says in this scripture, some scriptures say he was terrified. Okay? Why was he terrified?
Moved from you.
Okay?
That's true. When we have experienced God. Or other people in our lives that give us a sense of security. If we're separated from them. It terrifies us.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, whether it's as a child. Losing visual contact or sight of your mother. You know, I mean, kids you see turn around and gross, in a store somewhere, they get separated and the panic that suddenly gets on their face. And I think if we have truly, as David had by this time in his life. Experienced God as, as a real tangible part of his life. If he suddenly feels isolated, that's gotten frightening.
Yeah. David. Felt. That God hid his face from him. He said, you hid your face, I was terrified. He got that, all of that sudden, that sense. All the things he had. And his. had in his great kingdom, everything was going great, all of a sudden, nothing, okay? It was too much for David, terrifying, right? Says, to you I cry, the Lord, I plead for mercy. This cry is a what?
A lament.
A lament, but it's also a prayer, okay? He's talking to God, so it is a prayer. Says, he desires to see God's face, not just God's hand of wrath, okay? He wants to see God's face because that was what he knew. And he knew that was God's favor, was God showing his face to him, okay? In Philippians six, I'm sorry, four, six through seven, it says, in everything by prayer and supplication, make your requests known to God. So cry, weep, whatever you need to be making your requests known. Cultivate a habit of praying in times of trouble. Reality cultivated a habit of praying all the time so that you can notice whenever you stray a little bit, so you can notice when you get vanilla. Then he says, he uses an odd phrase, he says, what prophet is there my death? If I go to the pit, will the dust praise you? So he feels to God, so to speak, how his life can be a testament to God's glory. So he's basically saying, if I die, there's no longer, I'm no longer giving you glory. Of course, God could say back to him, right now, you're not glorifying me very much anyway, yeah, you know?
That seems like an odd statement to me.
Yeah.
It's like, what, you know, God? Okay, he wants me to glorify him, but he doesn't need me.
Right. It's, it's, hi, his desire, in fact, we'll talk about that in a minute, there's some scriptures that, that support that. His desire is for us to praise him and things like that, and for that to be a part. David is saying, okay, what he's really saying is forgive me so that I can do this again, okay? Don't let me die here. And then he says, how will the dust praise you? And, and what that's talking about is, is dust, you know, what are we without life? We are dust. Ashes, ashes dusted us, right? So we'll be dust again, okay? But our dust can't praise. And so that's what he's, that's, that's what he's talking about here. And Isaiah forty-three, twenty-one, it says, God's people are formed to declare his praise, okay? In Philippians one, twenty, twenty and twenty-one, it says, Paul desires to honor Christ in his body, whether by life or by death. So basically, he wants to praise God in his death, so to speak, as well as in his life. So whatever, whatever he does, he wants to glorify God. So when we, when we're praying, we gotta focus not only on our needs, but we wanna focus on bringing glory to God as a part of it. He says, oh, hear, oh Lord, and be merciful to me, oh Lord, my helper. True faith rests in God's mercy, okay? Uh, basically, David said, hear me. He meant more than just listen, he basically said, hear me so that therefore you might act or respond, take action. God be my helper, what does that mean?
I need you all the time to help me get through life.
Okay? My pride was misplaced. You're the only source in reality that can help me, okay? Forgive my pride and help me. Psalms forty-six, it says, God is our refuge and strength and very present help in trouble. We've all heard that. Let's read the third set of scriptures.
You turned my lament into dancing. You removed my sackcloth and clothed me with gladness so that I can sing to you and not be silent. Lord, my God, I will praise you forever.
Okay? God transforms sorrow into joy. He takes that, he has the power to turn the deepest pain into joy, okay? He can remove that weight of the mourning and replace it by celebration. Basically here, he says, you turn my mourning into dancing. What he's really saying is, get off the floor and start dancing. Stop laying on the floor and get up and dance. Start celebrating, okay? Dance with joy and celebration, okay? You know? You are, you know, that's what God does for us. God turns all those things into something. You know, in, in, in John sixteen, twenty, he said, told his disciples, you will weaken lammit, but the world will rejoice. You will be sorrowful, but your sorrow will turn to joy, okay? So we're gonna have sorrow, but it's going to turn to joy. We're gonna have these things, but we're gonna go. He gives you the imagery of sackcloth. Why sackcloth?
Poor man's fabric.
Poor man's fabric, but when do you wear sackcloth?
When you're mourning.
When you're mourning. So you put on your sackcloth and ashes, okay? So he's talking about the weight of everything that's going on him is basically, he's wrapped metaphorically in sackcloth.
And you, and if you think about David's life, all the times when he would be, you know, on the run from Saul or the Philistines or anybody else, you know, that's, that's a heavy weight to bear. God lifted all that off of him.
Okay? This shows, this, this, this symbol of gree is showing how much this affected David, you know? And, and I mean, you know, I mean, remember I read you a while ago, he laid before God and said, take me instead of anybody else. Okay? At the threshing floor, okay? Clothes me with gladness. It, it's really the same kind of a thing. You remember when the women started singing the praises after David killed Goliath? That same kind of a, a phrase, the same kind of stuff, okay? In Isaiah sixty-one, ten, it says, he has clothed me with the garments of salvation. He has covered me with a robe of righteousness, okay? So this garment thing, you know, is, is, is carried throughout. And he says, do not be silent, okay? Praise is not a private matter. It's gotta be expressed outwardly and other, and often, excuse me, outwardly and often. Silence in the face of God's blessings signals what?
A lack of thanks.
Lack of thanks, yeah. Oh, well, you know? I, i- if you get a present, you don't thank the person for it, it's like, eh, I really didn't like this. I really didn't want this, right?
You should never get another one.
Well, that's really why he's talking about it here with God, you know what I mean? Praise is something outward. Silence in the face of God's blessings signals ingratitude. It signals we're not glorifying him. In Matthew five, sixteen, it says, let your light shine before others, so they may see your good works and give glory to the Father. Our gratitude gives glory to the Father, okay? And then he talks about deliverance. He says, the purpose of our transformation is not only propitizing, but it is to glorify God, it's for others to see. Praise is an important element in our relationship with God. Magnificence of God, you know, is something we don't do much of. I, I just sort of guess, I said, I probably only praise two percent of the time. You know what I mean? I don't know how much you do it, but start thinking about it, and you probably say, eh, not very much. Start thinking about it. We praise two percent. David's talking about doing it almost continuously, okay? We gotta learn how to praise, and then we gotta learn how to thank God. In Thessalonians five, eighteen, remember it says, give thanks in all circumstances, for this is the will of God in Christ Jesus for you. Gratitude and praise should always follow God's, okay? Think about your life, share testimonies of God's work in your life. That is part of you glorifying God, sharing those things that God's doing. Public praise encourages others to public praise, okay? In conclusion, you know, we had several different sections today. First section reminds us of praise God for who he is. And, you know, the deliverance. The issue is, you know, what kind of past trial have we went through where God delivered us, just like he did the pilgrims, okay? Praise him for that faithfulness. Share your testimony to encourage others in that situation. In the second section, we looked about that self-reliance of during prosperity. You know? All things come from God, they don't come from ourselves. Seek mercy in moments of crisis, align our prayers with his purpose, okay? We've figured out where you've relied on your own strength rather than God's, and spend time asking God for forgiveness for that, asking for his guidance, mercy and help on how to manage that in the future. Share with others how God's mercy has brought you through challenges. In the third section, we learned how to, that God teaches us about our deliverance should lead us a life of vocal, unreserved praise and gratitude. Commitment to worship aligns our hearts with God's purposes. If we worship, then we ought to be aligned with God and other people obviously God's goodness through our praise there. So our praise and our thanks ought to be something that, that gives testimony to God and glorifies God. So this week, look for somebody to intentionally share testimony of God's faithfulness to, okay? Look for somebody to sit there and talk about how God's been faithful to you. Praise God to somebody and thank God before somebody, okay? Let your life and your words be a continuous praise and thanksgiving to God, okay? All right. That good? Y'all like that?
Yeah.
Better than most Psalms that I do, right? All right, let's go to Lord in prayer. Father, we thank you so much for today, for just your, um, challenging us to learn to praise, to learn to give thanks, and to learn to take that and put all those together to give you glory. We pray, Lord, that we can do a lot better than that. We know that we're probably doing less than a tenth of what we should be doing there. We pray you help us to be the people of God that you really want us to be there. We pray this in Jesus's name, amen. Thank you, folks.